I would like to welcome everyone. We were going to begin the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education. Today is Wednesday, September 6th. It is 7:01. I would like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
Mr. Felber's absent.
Yes, Mr. Felber. Unfortunately, he's not able to make it today to the illness, so he is absent today. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not aware of any changes to the agendas, so we'll move on from there. I'll begin with my president's report. Good evening. Welcome, staff, administration, and families of Samuel Bissell Elementary and RB Chamberlain Middle School. I'm Mark Curtis, and it is my privilege to be your board president. Classes are in full swing and our extracurricular activities are well underway. This evening marks the first of many where we once again are graced with seeing the smiling faces of our students and acknowledging their wonderful achievements. And as I have often said, this is always my favorite part of the meetings. So, I could go on about the many things that I normally talk about, but I will spare you the agony of boring subject matter and instead, in my president's report, in breaking, in breaking record fashion, so that we can get to the business of doing what we all like to do and why we're all here. So, welcome back. And this concludes my president's report. I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mrs. Powers.
I think Mr. Aho has to record that time.
Yeah, writing that down.
Good evening, Mr. Curtis, Board of Education, and community members. It's been a very busy two weeks since the beginning of the school year. And this evening, we have planned for you two administrative reports. The first will be provided by Mr. Mark Bindis, who is our district nutritionist and dietitian, rather, and he's going to provide for the Board of Education and our community a little bit of an update about the food services options that we provide for our students. It's always a very interesting conversation with Mr. Bindis, and I'm sure that you'll be intrigued by all that we do here to make sure that our Tigers are eating well as they attend school here in our school district. Also this evening, Mrs. Jennifer Farthing, who is our Director of Curriculum, will provide for the Board of Education and our community a first look at our preliminary local report card results from the 2016-17 school year. We know that the Ohio Department of Education will release the results formally on September 15th, but we have been looking at this data through the summer and sending data back and forth to the ODE when we found things that didn't quite look right. So this evening, Mrs. Farthing will provide for the Board of Education the information as we note today. We still have some missing pieces that the ODE has not released at this point, but what we know, we are happy to share with you this evening. Board of Education, I want to let you know that I just put the final touches on the fourth edition of our Quality Profile, and it is now in the hands of the printer. Mrs. Farthing's going to project the cover of this year's Quality Profile, and once again, it's going to include a whole lot of information about the value of an education here in our school district. We know that the local report card will provide for you a day in the life or a data point for our students, but we know that our students are much more than a data point and that they come to school and they participate in so many wonderful activities, and they're learning and they're growing. And our Quality Profile provides for our community members a glimpse of what is happening here in our school district every single day of the school year. Some of our successes, some of our challenges, some of the things that we do really well, some areas that we need to improve, but I think that our community will be very pleased with the fourth edition of our Quality Profile, and I guess we're not going to see it. Okay. That's what I get for teasing you. See, that's what happens. Also, Board of Education, you know, all of us have been watching what's going on on CNN or the Weather Channel, and many of us have family members that have an impact when Hurricane Harvey hit Texas and Louisiana and such. And as a school district, we have determined that we would like to do something to assist with the relief efforts. So this Friday is going to be known as Tiger Hearts and Hats for Harvey Relief, and what we're asking our students and our staff members and family, if you want to participate, that's great, too. We're asking a donation of a dollar to be able to wear your favorite hat to school, and all of that money that we collect will be forwarded to the American Red Cross for the relief efforts in Texas and Louisiana. Now we're watching what's happening in Florida, and we pray and hope that all is well for the families that, that live in that state and the east coast of our country, but we do know that folks who have experienced Hurricane Harvey surely can use some assistance. So as a school district, and I know we have a very generous school district, we look forward to Friday being a successful day. I've already asked my staff to send photos so that I can post them, so that we can see all the crazy hats and fun hats and I'm quite sure sports hats and such that our, our staff and students will be dawning on their heads come Friday morning. So, thanks in advance for your Tiger generosity. We know that very many people have great misfortune, and we're happy to help in any way that we can. Board of Education, as you know, the district secured a number of grants this past summer from the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Summit County, and I wanted to ask Mrs. Trapphegan to please come forward. We have some exciting parent programs planned for the year, and she's with us this evening to introduce the, the next upcoming exciting parent forum for later in September. Good evening, Mrs. Trapphegan.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Education Superintendent Powers. One of the initiatives that we're really proud of in our district is our PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. And in that, through that program and framework, we have also partnered with Beach Brook to secure three grants this year, and, well, actually four grants this year, and we secured two last year. And one of the things that we're doing now in the districts is we're expanding our services not only to our kids and wrapping services around them to help them be successful, but we wanted to extend our services to our parents in more of an information night. So what we have come up with, we're going to be having five different movie and parent education nights, and the first one is going to be on September the 26th, and it will be at Dodge, or no, yes, at Dodge Middle School, and it will be for RBC students and Dodge Intermediate students, and it will be for students there and their families. And while the kids are watching a movie, and the movie is going to be the Lego Batman movie, parents will be attending, attending a session using good choice programs. And as you, you know, turn on the television, you see different things in, in the news about the Ebola epidemic, and we just feel it's very important that we inform our parents, especially starting at the preteen years, just how you can communicate with your children, how you can, you know, maybe spot some things in your adolescent that you need to pay attention to, or how you can bond as a family. Because what the research is showing is if you have open communication in your homes and can positively communicate with your students, we can hopefully provide the services so that our kids make good choices. So, please join us on the 26th at Dodge, and know that it will start at 5:30, and the first 100 people that register for this will have a free pizza dinner, and there will be childcare available. The, the dinner will be from 5:30 to 6:00 in the program. The kids will see the Batman movie in the auditorium, and parents will have the program at that same time. So it'll be a good night for your whole family, and the registration information, this flyer's also on our, on our website, so you can either register that way, or you can contact Amy Bennett at Dodge, or Debbie DiAgostino at RBC to register. So, thank you, and I hope you'll see you all on September 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Trapphegan. Again, I appreciate the efforts of our Department of Pupil Services, our Beach Brook Partners, as well as the Summit County ADM for providing the financial resources to be able to now bring parent education programs regarding drug and alcohol abuse and mental health issues. If you read the Akron Beacon Journal or look at the TV, you often see that these are real life issues that many families are struggling with. So we're happy to be able to partner with these agencies to provide our community members with some relevant information that we hope you find beneficial. Board of Education, as you know, we have been participating in the dialogue regarding the Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA, and this new federal law requires every state in the nation to submit a plan that explains how ESSA will be implemented. Ohio initially developed and released a draft plan in February of 2017. The initial plan had areas of concern, and thankfully, the Ohio Department of Education went back to the drawing board and revised the plan. The State Board of Education amended and approved the, the draft plan in July, and currently, the plan is being under review by Governor Kasich. The plan will be submitted to the US Department of Education for consideration this month, and school districts in Ohio will implement the various components and requirements of ESSA beginning with this school year. So stay tuned as we learn more about how ESSA will, needs to be implemented here in our school district. Lots and lots of conversation going on in my network, and we hope to be able to provide up-to-date information as it becomes known later in this calendar year. Board of Education, as you know, since April of 2016, Mr. Aho and I have been engaged in negotiations with the City of Twinsburg regarding a tax revenue sharing agreement that would be fair and equitable to both the city and the school district. The law requires a city to share 50% of income tax revenues for abated properties with the public school district within its borders when the payroll exceeds $1 million unless the city and the local school board arrive at an agreement that includes other terms. The new cornerstone Business Park abatements have provided an opportunity to revisit the city's revenue sharing obligations, to obtain and review data on all current abatements and their impact on the school district, and to discuss how to best proceed from here. While abatements are not typically advantageous to school districts, they continue to be a vital economic tool for business development and are used to, in virtually every community, to attract and maintain business opportunities, not unlike Twinsburg. The City of Twinsburg is absolutely not any different, and most recently used tax abatement incentives to attract various new business opportunities in the Cornerstone Business Park. The law does provide some level of safeguards to school districts affected by tax abatements, including veto power for anything over and above a 75% abatement, and an opportunity to revenue share on municipal income taxes on new employee payroll exceeding $1 million. If the parties fail to negotiate a revenue sharing agreement, the revenue sharing procedure set forth in the statute is the default procedure. Unfortunately, the statutory revenue procedure can be somewhat challenging to administer. Therefore, generally, it is best to have a negotiated revenue sharing agreement in place. Over the past few years, income tax sharing has not proven to be all that beneficial to the district for a few key reasons. First, when an abatement is given to an existing business for expansion, the new employee payroll is less likely to exceed the $1 million threshold. Moreover, difficult economic times have resulted in diminished payroll capacity, further affecting revenue sharing opportunities. Finally, warehouse and distribution center type properties generate much fewer dollars, I'm sorry, much fewer high-paying jobs per square foot and traditionally have lower payrolls. In fact, in 2016, only three of nine abatements produced a payroll sufficient to generate an income tax revenue sharing agreement for the Twinsburg City School District amounting to less than $50,000. While it's too early to tell exactly what income tax revenues the new businesses in Cornerstone Business Park will produce, it is anticipated that these businesses will most definitely achieve payrolls exceeding $1 million. Board of Education, this evening's agenda includes the recommendation from Marty and me that you approve the tax revenue sharing agreement noted as Exhibit J8. This tax revenue sharing agreement includes the following three important terms. First, income tax revenue sharing of 8% of the total income taxes generated by any company receiving up to a 50% abatement. Secondly, abatements not to exceed 50% with district approval. While abatements beyond 50% are discouraged, this provision gives the city the ability to remain competitive with economic incentives, but requires the city and the school district to negotiate a separate agreement in the event the city desires to grant an abatement of more than 50%. In the event that the city and the school district fails to negotiate a mutually acceptable agreement within six months, the tax revenue sharing agreement provides for a default to revenue sharing of 50% of the income taxes collected from those companies. Also, there's a sunset provision that terminates the agreement at the end of the term of pending tax abatement agreements. Marty and I sincerely appreciate Mayor Ted Yates, Law Director Maestros, and Development Director Larry Finch for their ongoing dialogue as the draft revenue agreement was developed. I'm hopeful that the Board of Education approves the agreement this evening. So as you can see, Board of Education, it has been a very busy time here in the school district with a lot going on, not only with our kids, but with the business of running the school district, and we are so excited and delighted to have our families here with us this evening. And without further ado, I would like to ask Mr. Scott Winters, who is the Assistant Principal at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, to come on forward and to present some highlights on Mrs. Johnson's behalf regarding Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Good evening, Mr. Winter.
Good evening, Superintendent Powers, Board of Education. It's my pleasure to be with you tonight to talk about some of the great programming we have at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, which we have created with the many partnerships we have forged over the years. I've never used this before, so I hope it goes well. Ding. All right. So, we are very lucky to team up with the Twinsburg Police Department to bring the Officer Phil program to our school. We've had Officer Phil out for the last few years, and it's the right mix of entertainment and instruction that teaches the kids how to be safe whether they're at school, whether they're at home, in their neighborhoods, on the ball field. And you can see in the picture there, we've got a Chief Noga there, and he's been with us for many of the presentations, but we were very lucky this year to have Officer Kupniski from the Twinsburg Police Department join us. And, you know, just their presence there, you know, the, first off, the kids love it, but also, I think Chief Noga and Officer Kupniski have gotten a lot of, out of the program, too, as they hear the instruction that Officer Phil has given to our students. And of course, they offer, you know, a lot of their personal experiences as part of the presentation as well. We just completed our bus safety presentations, which we teamed with the City School District Transportation Department. And each class attends one of the different sessions, and, you know, it's really a wonderful partnership because, you know, many of our students do ride the bus, and it's very important that, A, they know how to board the bus safely, but also deboard the bus if, in the event that there is an emergency. And these safety drills give those, give our students the opportunity to do that in, in a very, you know, controlled way, and it's a, you know, our bus drivers are wonderful, talking to the kids in a calm manner, so in, so if unfortunately something is to ever come up, our students will know what to do because of attending these different programs. Now, this is something new we have at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and this started actually last year during Career Day, where we had a pilot from Kent State University come out, and through that, we have them actually coming out tomorrow, September the 7th, and they're going to be talking to our kids about aeronautics, and math, and science, and how all of that kind of goes into flying a plane. And it's all part of a big open house there actually have this coming weekend as well. So this is something that we hope to continue in the future. Our Father's Walk has each year grown in attendance, and this year, our Father's Walk is expected to be one of the best we've ever had. Each year, we continue to add to it, and we're so fortunate of the support the community has given us. This year's Father's Walk is September the 20th, and we're looking forward to a lot of fathers and father figures coming out, walking their nephews, or nieces, or sons, and daughters to school that morning. You know, and if, I always say, if it's anything like a morning at my house, it's very hectic. So we hope this gives the opportunity for fathers and father figures to spend some time, quiet time with their, with their children, or nieces, or nephews before, you know, coming and dropping them off at school and heading off to work. We also team up with Heinen's Grocery Store, and we have a nutrition assembly. This is our third year of doing this, and this is a wonderful assembly because it teaches kids about different foods they might not know about. So during the assembly, the folks at Heinen's talk a little about the foods, the origin, where they're from. You know, the one thing that's wonderful about the Heinen's folks is that they continue to revamp the program every single year. So every year they've come, and this is their third year coming, they do something a little different. So this year, they're bringing more of the geography of the different foods into their program. And then, of course, the kids then have the opportunity throughout the next few months to go to Heinen's and perhaps sample some of the foods that they just learned about. Now, one of our biggest partnerships is with our PTA, and I, I could go on and on about all the wonderful things that the PTA does for the staff and the students and just the school as a whole. And to some of the, and I, these pictures won't even do justice for what they do for us on a daily basis. But, you know, they welcomed everyone back this year with a wonderful luncheon, but, you know, they also provide meals for us on conference nights, different treats every now and again. I mean, they are just wonderful, and they're so generous, and, you know, just a wonderful They had a huge presence at our open house, actually, both of our open houses earlier in this school year. And what you see there in that picture is they set up a table, and all the kids who came through entered raffles for their classes, and then winners were pulled, and then those classes won different prizes, such as extra recess, pizza parties, pajama days, and so forth. And, you know, our membership is at an all-time high, and, you know, they just do so many wonderful, wonderful things, including bringing Cozy to Samuel Bissell Elementary School. So, we've been very lucky for the last few years to have Cozy on Wheels come to Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and, and it's all through the generosity of our PTA. So what you see up there right now is one of our last assemblies that we had, and that was about ecology. In addition to ecology, we've also had Cozy on Wheels come and talk to our kids about chemistry, and new this year, they'll be talking to our kids about the human body. And this is just some of the pictures, because the way the Cozy on Wheels assemblies work out is they all start out as one big assembly, and then there's breakout sessions for each individual class. So this was part of the ecology program where the kids were looking at, taking a look at the age of trees and so forth. So, you know, it's really hands-on, and again, it's all made possible because of the generosity of the PTA, but then also, everyone you see there, those are all parent volunteers who come in over the two days, you know, volunteering their time to be a part of it, and you can see how hands-on that they are as well. And one of our final partnerships is with the Cleveland Clinic, and this is something that we've done for the last five or six years. And what we've had is we've had guest readers come from the Cleveland Clinic, and what they do is they come, they read to our students, but another benefit of it is not only do they read to the kids, but they also talk to them about what they do at the Cleveland Clinic, whether it's pharmacy, or a doctor, x-ray tech. So the kids also get a really good idea of, you know, just some jobs that are out there in the healthcare field. So those are just some of the many wonderful things we have at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. So we're looking forward to a fantastic year to continue these partnerships and, you know, for our kids to continue to grow, and grow to the point where they get to RB Chamberlain. And Mr. Reese is here, and I know he has some fantastic things that he'd like to share
Mr. Reese, I think Mr. Curtis is going to help with some pins tonight.
Okay.
Sure we have Outstanding Students of the Month?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us here. It's, it's been a fast and furious start to the school year, and of course, the beginning of the year, we do a lot of baseline assessments, seeing where students are, and seeing where they want to grow, and in this short amount of time, some students have really stood out to our staff, and we have four teams at the school. We're a very large school, almost 700 kids this year, 692 is our current enrollment. But we make it a small school feel by breaking that 692 into four teams, red, yellow, blue, and green, and each of the teams have the same core group of teachers, and the teachers really get to know those kids. They have meetings about those kids to make sure they're all being cared for, looked after, and succeeding. And so the teams vote each, each month on the students they would like to have represented at the school board meeting. And so for 7th grade, I'd like to introduce our Students of the Month. Dominique Carr. Did not notice her here today, but we'll make sure to get her her certificate at school. Riley Lash. And our 8th graders, Chloe Voe. Chloe didn't make it. Patrick Bustoni. We had a very busy night, so we had cross-country, football, volleyball. And Christopher Bryant. How about a round of applause? Give your parents a second to take some pictures. All right. All right. Besides these wonderful students, I think some highlights for me is just looking around the building and seeing some of the changes that have been made since school started. One of the changes you see is on the lockers. All of the athletes have tags that were made by the cheerleaders put up, and so that is over 200 tags that the cheerleaders had to make, because we have over 200 student athletes at Chamberlain right now with our fall sports. And participating in extracurricular activities is a fantastic way to build character, connect the kids to school, it improves academic achievement, it's healthy, and so we're very proud with the number of student athletes we have. I think you're familiar with that, because we actually had to add a cross-country coach because we're, we're hitting the, the century mark in cross-country runners right now. So I'm very excited about the number of student athlete tags. We have what's called a tag team, and they welcome the new students into the, into the district if they, if they're coming from out of district. So you see those tags on the locker, those students have tags on their locker welcoming them, and it just creates a real positive atmosphere. And PTA came in, and some of the PTA moms and some of the students at school came in and decorated all of our bulletin boards in very positive messages. So when you walk around the halls, each team has different bulletin boards they made, and all of them are very positive and creating just a positive atmosphere. I really like that. And then probably my favorite thing is we got PBIS signs, and PBS is still new to a lot of schools, and we're still trying to figure it out. And one of the components of the effective PBS program is having signs, and so we wanted to take that next step, and I thought, well, I don't know what, what's the big deal with signs? And the signs are all written in very positive language about expectations we have for students. And it really has hit me just watching how orderly and how well the students conduct themselves and meet the expectations, and how well they know what the expectations are, have any signs, and all of the staff and all the students speaking the same language as far as what the expectations are. And so a 7th grade football team, they're undefeated. And so, 7th grade football team, they're undefeated, they're off to a good start. And so, I was whooping up a little bit in the hallway, and the students said, "Mr. Reese", it's voice level one. And all of them said, "Oh, they're learning." So, all of those things, it just really, I think, makes Chamberlain a welcoming place for a difficult time of life, and I'm very, very happy with how our school year started, our new staff, our new programs, and our new students who are very, have been very successful early on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. As you can see, Board of Education, at two of our five schools, things are off to a great start, and you'll hear the reports from our other three schools at the next board meeting. That concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Powers. And we very much look forward to recognizing other schools as well as staff. We, we do also mix in the staff and do acknowledgements for staff as well. So, thank you very much for coming to the Board of Education meeting. And you are more than welcome to stay if you want to listen to more of our regular business, but if you want to leave, this would be the time to do so. So, thank you so much for participating.
Okay, I'll go ahead and proceed with the next item on the agenda, which is committee reports. Did, do we have any committee reports, or did any committees meet?
Yes.
Okay. I do have an update, a CBCC update. As, as you remember the last board meeting, I gave remarks with respect to, that I would, you know, provide some updated information. And at the last, the last board meeting, we had CBCC, first day of school had not yet happened. So, we actually met, the CBCC board met August 24th, and it was actually the day after the first day the students returned to the CBCC, where staff welcomed them. A lot of bright faces, a lot of excitement, a lot of renovations and updates at the center that have occurred over the summer, just like, you know, we do here at Twinsburg City Schools. They do a lot of work over the summer to make sure that the facility is up to snuff and ready to go. So that happened. One of the things that we voted on, on the 24th, was awarding our partner districts $30,000 in partnership dollars. And just recall, and I've talked about this in previous board meetings, but this $30,000 was something that the CBCC, it was a normal process where we would award these dollars. And then, there was a point in time, a timeframe, where the CBCC had to stop doing it because of financial constraints that we were experiencing at that time. Times have since improved financially for the CBCC, and so the board moved to reinstitute the awarding of those dollars to, to our member districts. And so, on the 24th, we, we moved and voted unanimously to award these dollars to our, to our member districts. And there are some strings attached to the dollars as they are awarded. There are some very specific things that the dollars are meant for, that the school districts have to provide information and evidence that they will be used for, for the purposes that they were meant. But nonetheless, it's always a good day, we're able to award those extra dollars to districts, especially in light of what's going on and financial constraints that districts all across Ohio are experiencing. So we're very pleased to be able to do that. Some things that are coming up, actually tomorrow, at, there's going to be a high school open house from 7:00 to 8:30 at the CBCC, and also Monday, September 11th, for the Adult Education Program graphic design and print and web production, there's going to be an information session, September 11th, from 6:30 to 7:30. So, not a whole lot of information considering the kids just got back, but as the year gets rolling and programs get, get up and moving, I'll have more to report in future board meetings. So, that's all I have for my piece for committee reports. Okay. Moving on to administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Annually, Mr. Bendis is required by statute to provide for the Board of Education information about the standards under which our food service program operates here in the district. So this evening, Mr. Bendis is joining us, not only about meeting a requirement, but also telling us a little bit about some of the exciting additions this year, especially that salad bar idea at a couple of our schools. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As Mrs. Powers alluded to, the main purpose for me being here is to fulfill federal requirements in that, the certification of standards governing the types of foods and beverages sold on school premises. So, Twinsburg City Schools is in compliance with Ohio Revise Code 3313.814, which is the standards governing foods and beverages sold on school premises. As the registered dietitian for Twinsburg City Schools, it is my job to review annually the foods that we offer, to make sure that they not only meet the federal guidelines, but in most cases exceed those. So, as we do that each year, we also strive to make sure that our satisfaction, that we're always providing not only healthy food, but food that is tasty and appealing to our students and staff. So, that is the conclusion of that part of the presentation. That fills, fulfills the federal requirement. I also like to take the opportunity to come out here once a year and talk to you about what's new in food service. So, as always, you know, our job is always changing. As kids' likes change, we try to roll with those changes and try to come up with some new creative things every year. So, we were busy over the summer. We had new vending machines placed everywhere through, by 7-Up, and with that, we also started two serving lines. A brand-new, our Tiger Grab and Go Cafe. The upper left-hand corner is our new high school serving line, which is a walk-up grab-and-go serving line. And then our Grab and Go Cafe mobile cart at RBC Chamberlain, which was a nice addition. We actually, we only have four staff members at RB Chamberlain, and we now operate three full-service lines with those four staff members. So, really trying to reach out and get our kids through the lines as fast as possible and give them as many options and choices as possible. So we try to snazz it up a little bit and try to bring in some new products every year. So, some of those new products. Changes at the high school, we brought in our Piled High Paninis. So we make fresh paninis every Tuesdays and Thursdays at Twinsburg High School. We do an Italian panini and a turkey bacon Swiss panini. Those have gone off to a great start. And as always, you know, it's all about choices. So we partnered with Domino's Pizza this year, and we offer Domino's Pizza, which is smart snack compliant, buy the slice, available à la carte to all of our students every day. So those are a couple little changes at the high school. We're trying to reinvent and recreate every year, so have new opportunities and new options for the students. This is a nice one. District-wide changes, we are now offering homemade donuts a couple times a week at all of our schools. I will tell you, the disclaimer is that they are whole grain. So, but you know, our, our breakfast program is, is always increasing and always improving, and we're always trying to find ways to draw our kids into it. You know, we have a lot of kids in our program that are in need of this meal, and anything that we can do to entice them in, to have them come in and join us for breakfast is a positive thing. So, what, what that slide doesn't show you is we offer, also offer yogurt as an option every day. That was brand-new this year, but that's not nearly as flashy and as exciting as donuts, so who are we kidding, right? So, one of the other district-wide changes that we made this year was we had a farm-to-school venture with a local apple farm. So that, and what I try to do with that is, you know, I've had my webpage for a lot of years, and you know, traffic will come and go, but most of the traffic is on to the menus. So, every time you open up one of our menu links, the first page that you open up is always kind of like a little promo ad of what's going on in food service. So, one of the things you'll see is that our venture with Baum &amp; Orchards began this year, and each month, we're going to debut a new apple from them. So August and September, we did Paula Red Apples. We'll do Yellow Delicious in October, Pink Ladies in November, Macintosh in December, Gold Rush Apples in January, Empire Apples in February, Melrose Apples in March, Red Delicious, of course, in April, and then Fuji Apples. So, trying to introduce the kids to some new things. Typically, in years past, we've always done Red Delicious Apples, and they're always coming from Washington, and it's the same apple year-round. So, so this is a local, fresher product, and you can tell the difference. I mean, it really makes a big difference. So we're happy about that venture that we've joined with them. A couple other changes that, well, really, the main other change that we've done is we've introduced our salad bar at the elementary schools. And my disclaimer with that is, as a registered dietitian, I am probably the first one that will tell you that I don't eat at salad bars. Because most salad bars that you see in most restaurants are pretty gross. You know, people sell, people serve themselves. Well, I'm telling as is. From a food safety standpoint, everybody touches the handles of the utensils, they drop them in the utensils, they drop them in the food, then somebody else touches them. So everything that, everybody that touched that utensil, that touched the food is contaminating it with something. So from that standpoint, I'm not a big proponent of salad bars. Now with that being said, I've wanted to do salad bars, and I've wanted to offer more fresh options to our younger kids. We do entree salads from all of our kids at Dodge, all the way up through the high school. So we have fresh salad options for them, but it gets a little more difficult to do it for the elementary school kids. So, our You Choose, We Serve Salad Bar is all behind a glass window. So it's a beautiful thing. Our servers, I, I will tell you that we've now done this, it debuted the first day of school, and then we've done it one more time. It's every other Wednesday at, at Bissell Elementary and Wilcox Primary. And it's been one of our biggest movers so far. And I will tell you, I brought, I have a current Kent State dietitian, a dietetic student that's working with me, and she was just amazed that our Wilcox kids and Bissell kids were not just taking salads, but they were eating them. So, and they weren't just eating the toppings on top. So, a couple of the things, they start with dark green romains, those are pre-portioned, and then the students can have up to, well, one of three meat toppings. We do popcorn chicken, which is obviously the most popular, but we do diced turkey and diced ham as well. Cheddar cheese, mozzarella cheese, croutons, bacon bits, cucumbers, grape tomatoes, and baby carrots. So, not a million options, but you know, limited, but expansive enough to give the kids some choice and give them some variety. So, and they also get a hot soft pretzel with it as well, a whole-grain hot soft pretzel. So, so far, it's done really well. We are actually alternating that on Wednesdays with our, our homemade smoothies, which did really well for us last year. So that is a big item for us, and we're looking forward to a big year with that item. And really, that's it for, for us for this year. Like I said, we're always digging and always trying to look to do something new and something creative to try to keep our kids happy. You know, it's all about feeding kids and doing it nutritious, nutritiously. And you know, I have an awesome staff, and they work hard at trying to make everything that we implement succeed. Any questions?
No questions. I mean, for one, gosh, I'm dating myself, but it's been a long way since pizza and tater tots. I don't remember having all of these choices available when I was in school, much less whole-grain, you know, donuts and yogurt and smoothies and like...
And Twinsburg, we continue to make our own pizza sauce. We still, we'll have our own herb gardens, so we grow our own herbs for that as well.
That's just amazing.
So we're, we're constantly, you know, it's a process. We, we work within a very limited budget as far as food costs, because you know, we have to provide a lot of food to fulfill the federal requirements. So, my staff is just fantastic. I mean, we offer at most of the schools, well, at all the schools including the elementaries, there's a fresh fruit and fresh vegetable option every day. Once they hit Dodge, there's probably four or five fresh fruit and fresh vegetable options every day. So there's lots of choices, and not just side dish entree choices as well. So our, you know, we're here to feed our kids and make them as happy and keep them coming back. And you know, our goal is to, that's what our goal is every year. So we strive really hard to succeed and meet those requirements.
You've outdone yourself, you outdo yourself every year. And I can't, I don't remember any time where either of my kids have ever complained about what they had for lunch, or you know, any, any, any kind of food for that matter. So, I personally truly appreciate you, your leadership, and also your staff for all of the things that they do. It's amazing what you're able to do with so little and provide quality food choices for our students. I can't thank you enough for that. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the other things I did want to mention before I leave was we are opening our backpack program. We'll be, this will be the first Friday that we'll send backpacks home to our kids in need in Twinsburg. And I'm happy to say that we will be packing and sending home 146 backpacks this first Friday. So that's a huge thing. Kudos to the staff, the teaching staff that puts those all together. Kudos to the Emergency Assistance Center and their support in doing that. It's been a great venture, and we're really happy with it. Very proud of it.
Yeah, I love that you're working with Baum &amp; Orchards, if I said that right, because they're a great orchard, and a different apple every month, and some of those I don't even think I knew existed till I was an adult, and so, they're not getting the same apple day after day every year, and...
They did give us a little scare in the beginning. This is their first year working with schools so closely. And our first delivery was scheduled for, I think it was the Tuesday before school started, and we called and said, "Hey, where's our delivery?" And they're like, "Oh, we haven't had a chance to pick any apples yet. Would you guys like peaches instead?" We said, "Hey, we're promoting big apples." So no, they did, they were, they hustled it out and got us apples the very next day. So we were very thrilled with them. And they've been very supportive in our, in this program. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to also say, yeah, it looks great. My only complaint is that you didn't bring some samples for us.
I'm so sorry. You know, my wife said that.
You didn't do it.
Donuts? No, yeah.
No, thank you so much. Everything looks amazing. That panini looked really good. So yes, thank you for all you do for the kids. It's definitely not your typical lunch for the kids. So I love the whole idea of the smoothies, and, and I agree with you on the salad bar, so I'm glad you're doing it that way. So everything looks awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great evening.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Now I'd like to introduce Mrs. Farthing, who you already know. I'm quite sure she's our Director of Curriculum and has been very busy this summer along with the administrative team in crunching numbers, scrubbing data. And this evening, she is presenting to you for the first time our preliminary local report card results again. We don't have all of the information from the ODE yet, but we wanted to make sure that we were the first ones to tell you our story, as the ODE expects, we expect the ODE to release the information at some point next week. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. And I was going to make that disclaimer also, that this is what we know right now. And so, there is a chance that it will change when we see it live on the 15th, but this is what we know right now. I'm going to just jump right in. And I'm going to start with the graduation rate for the high school. And this is something to make us very proud and very happy, that for our four-year cohort and our five-year cohort, both scores earned an A. So our graduates are doing fabulous, and we look forward to that number being healthy again next year. Continuing for the high school, we have our Prepared for Success data, and this is how well was our class of 2016 prepared. And as you'll recall, this breaks down each of the different types of college and career readiness indicators that our students may be participating in. So we'll have ACT, and as you know, we are more of an ACT than an SAT district, and that shows right here in the numbers of how many students took the ACT. We have honors diplomas, industry-recognized credentials, we have our AP participation, and then how our students scored a three or better, and then our dual enrollment credit. And you'll see that there's the percentage for the classes of 15 and 16, and then the comparison to 2014 and 15. And just one thing, as I was typing this, that really struck me, was if you look at the AP participation, it's 253. And then if you look at the score of three or better, it's 243. That's only 10 students that didn't earn a three or better. And that, that just is great news. So I just wanted to throw that little piece of information out there. And we'll talk a little bit more in the presentation about the AP results. One thing that we always want to make mention when we talk about the Prepared for Success is that it is including the cohort of both years of graduates in there. So you'll see that I circled the 656. So for this year, it is the cohort of the 2015 and the 2016. So for this year, it is the cohort of the 2015 and the 2016 classes. The other thing about this indicator that I would like to mention is that this, for example, ACT, all of our students don't take the ACT, but all of the students are included in the cohort. So it doesn't just take the, I'm going to slip back a slide. It doesn't just take the 519 that participated. It is going to take and divide that by the whole 696, even though they didn't take the test. So that's one thing that I always like to point out to everyone about the Prepared for Success. Our score in Prepared for Success is a relatively healthy C. And just to make mention also that we are in year two of a three-year phase in for an increase in percentage. So that percentage is going to continue to go up next year and that shows right here that this already was an increase in percentage. Another indicator that's probably clear as mud for everyone is the K to three literacy. And this compares our students and how our students did that were placed on a RIMP, which is a reading improvement monitoring plan from one year to the next year. So we get a score for our kindergarten, our first grade and our second grade to third grade. And then you'll see that this is the ODE's document and it has OAA still. And you know, we're using the Ohio State test now. We haven't been using the OAA for a while, but that's okay. And then this is what our data looks like. And you'll see that it breaks it down and it keeps track of the students from 15 to 16 and 16 to 17. And it breaks it down. This, also, the percentage at the bottom is a moving target. So it will change each year and it is based on the state average from the year prior. So we'll start to get that information shortly as to what that score is going to be next year. But it will be changing every year and we don't know in advance. And then just to point out also that we do receive a deduction for our third graders who did not pass the OST, but were not on a reading improvement and monitoring plan. But they did reach promotion in another way. So they could have met promotion through math, through Iowa, or meeting the, the OST gives the students a 42, a 43, a 44. They give them a promotion score, but they had to reach the 700. And some of those students did phenomenally well on math. So we never would have placed them on a reading improvement monitoring plan. There was nothing in their performance or history that would make us ever think to put them on a RIMP. But they did meet proficient, not proficient, they did meet promotion in another way. So that's why, because in a moment, I'm going to tell you, 100% of our third graders passed and you're going to say, well, what about that eight? So that eight is just because they made promotion in another way. Clear as mud again. Then this I know is a little small, but this is our state indicators met and not met. And one item to make mention of on this is our threshold was raised to 80%. And that was the third and final increase. So it is stated that it will stay at 80%, but that's what we hear right now. So right now, those are our scores. There are definitely more red X's than we would like to see. However, some of those red X's, I'm not, please know, these are not excuses, but some of them we missed by point two. So we're very close in some of them. And we know what areas we need to focus on. We were given more information this year, except for English Language Arts, but for math, science, and social studies, we received greater breakdown in item analysis for how our students did. So during the data days that our staff is lucky enough to have, we are in looking at that data and seeing which areas are our strengths and our weaknesses and where our instruction needs to change. So that is new to us this year that we have that item analysis. And then this is just a breakdown of the high school. And we are always above state average. And as I said, we know we have areas for growth and focus that we will be working on this year and we have already started to work on. So they have changed this indicator a little bit and they have combined the indicator, they've combined the indicators and they've combined PI. So if you look here, you'll see that we earned 14 of the 24 indicators for 58.3%. And then down below, you'll see the performance index, which is a nine, we earned a 98 and that is an increase of a 94.3 last year. So we're very pleased with that increase. And then they've even made this a little more complicated. And if you look at this screen, the indicators are worth 25% and the performance index is worth 75%. And that combines together to give us an achievement score of a C. So the performance index is weighted heavier than the indicator. And that's a major change from our, the old report card, because the old report card was all about the indicators, really. I mean, that's all it was about was indicators. So you'll see that this now is 25 and 75 averaged together. The next indicator to discuss is our gap closing. And that is sometimes referred to as annual measurable objectives. And our annual measurable objectives is all about our subgroup performances. So all of our students are broken up into subgroups, multiple subgroups. And we are rated for our English Language Arts, mathematics, and graduation points. And this is for grades three through eight. And then it does include grade 10 at the high school. And we were so excited to see the preliminary score of an A. Just so out of our minds with excitement. However, then there is this demotion that we received. And we received a demotion. All of our subgroups, everyone made gains. However, there were three groups that did not make the gains. There was a threshold that we did not meet that threshold. Yes, we had growth over the previous year, but we didn't meet a certain threshold. So that caused us to receive a demotion. And our score for annual measurable objectives for the district is a B. And that last year was a D. So that made, that was something that we were celebrating. And we know what groups we need to work on and we're going to continue to work and we know every child's story and it's all about every student. And so that's something we know, we're pleased with, but we will continue to work on that. Gifted indicator is a part of the achievement indicator. And there are three things that you are required to meet to get, to meet the gifted indicator. And one of them is value added. We have to earn a score of a C and we don't know about value added yet. Performance index, this is our students who are in AMIS coded as gifted. And you had to earn a perform, you had a performance index of 117. 120 is the highest you can get. And our students earned 115.9. I think that's, that's so fabulous. And I think 117 in my mind is, is quite a lofty goal. And 120 is what you can earn. And our students, our overall student population had a 98. And so 115.9, that is something to celebrate. I know it's not 117, but to me, that is something that we should celebrate. Also with the gifted indicator, we have the gifted inputs. I could have another presentation on that, so we're just going to go with the high level right now. And we need to earn 80 inputs and we earned, we earned 42 of those. Again, this is the second year of an increase. So this PI score has increased each year and the gifted inputs has increased each year. I believe it started at 40. Last year was 60 and this year is 80. And the PI might have rate went from 115 to 116 to 117. So our targets keep moving and we're trying to move along with them. As I mentioned, we have not received our value added, which is also known as progress measures yet. I check for Mrs. Powers and Mr. Reese every day because Mr. Reese asks me almost every day about it. It is not available yet. I am hoping that we get to see it before everyone sees it on the 15th, but I don't know. This next chart right here is giving you the historical breakdown of how we did last year and where we are right now. Very excited, our K to three literacy increased from a D to a C. And our gap closing increased from a D to a B. So we are very pleased with those improvements. And again, we know our areas that we need to work on. And the bottom isn't filled in yet, obviously, because we don't have our progress scores Just because we, this is my opportunity to share with you our AP summary. You'll see that our number of students that took the test was 384 students. We administered 741, which is over 100, no, I'm reading that the wrong way. Sorry. So we administered 362 students tested this year and 635 exams. And just wanted to make special mention that our English Language and Composition class, overall their composite was a 95.7%. And that was a new instructor for her first time administering that class and that being a part of that. And that is great. Calculus BC, 18 out of 18 students passed or earned a three, four, or five. Spanish Language and Culture, 18 out of 18 students earned a three, four, or five. Physics two, seven out of seven students. And that just really, it's kind of mind blowing. This is not, again, like Mr. Bindis, this is not your cafeteria that we had when we were in school. The AP classes weren't even around when I was in school to date myself. And then microeconomics, which was our first time offered at the high school, 94.4% students earned a three, four, or five. First time teacher was so excited, texted me the night she got her results, just so excited. So just wanted to offer that AP summary. And final thoughts, we know our areas of improvement. We believe our Prepared for Success indicator will continue to increase. We have our areas to work on. 89.8% of third grade students were proficient or higher on the reading Ohio Achievement Administration. I can't believe that doesn't say Ohio State test. I apologize for that. You know, there's a lot of acronyms that we work with. And in conclusion, we know that our reading interventions have been effective with our students, with 100% of our third graders meeting the requirements of the third grade guarantee. We found that out last Monday and did a little happy dance when we found that out. So thank you for your support. Again, tentative until we get the official from the state, but we believe these are pretty solid and accurate. Any questions?
So I guess just looking at the indicators and looking at, you know, some of the, for like the math classes, is there anything as, you know, as a board of education that we could be doing to help, you know? Any, I know that you guys will obviously be having discussions, but you know, my concern would be, you know, like our ninth and 10th graders, which would be typically algebra and geometry. And then we had sixth and seventh. The math areas look like our, our kids are struggling. So you know, from, from my perspective, it's not, okay, great, we have the scores, but now, you know, what are we going to do? How are we going to, you know, lower ratios, more, what, you know?
Our first step is going to be the item analysis because this is the first time item analysis has been offered. So this is our third year of administering this type of assessment, but we have never seen an item analysis. So we are very happy and it breaks it down like a standard and then it tells us how our students performed. If it was worth two points, it tells us how many students earned one and how many students earned two points or zero points. So that's our first step, that we really need to get in there and look at that. Another thing that we have the good fortune of is one of our academic coaches at the high school was a part of the, like the range finding team at the Ohio Department of Education for Algebra. So she came back with all kinds of insider information that she'll be sharing with the Algebra teachers. So we know that, I mean, I, I know right now that Algebra and Geometry at the high school are an area of weakness. Our students at RV Chamberlain that are in our accelerated math classes, they earned their indicator. So we know that that, it's our students that are enrolled in that class at the high school that we know is an area we need to work on. So I think our first step is really that item analysis because this is our first time.
Sure, right. And I guess the reason I'm asking, you know, my, you know, it can be challenging for some students. So you know, what are we looking forward, you know, moving forward? What do, you know, what kind of additional help or additional resources are we going to provide for those, for those, you know, students? And I know we have our academic coaches, which is obviously a great, great tool and it definitely helps. And we know that, we have the data to support that, but we're still not quite there.
Correct. And one other thing that we approved is a, through the curriculum and technology committee and through the board of education was the applied geometry and applied algebra. So this is our first year offering those classes. Mrs. Teal and Mr. Kuzis have full classes for that. And so the students, this is our, again, our first time. So the students will be taking Algebra I, let's say, for example, on a white day. And then on a blue day, they are having Applied Algebra or Applied Geometry. So we are targeting the students who earned ones and twos on these assessments and in Math VIII. So we know our students that are having struggles in that area. So we're very curious to see if the applied class helps, but we think having the students have math every day is going to be a benefit to them. If Algebra's not your strength, having it only every other day isn't ideal. So we're trying out these applied classes and I think so. We have some things in place and that's one of the item analysis and the applied classes.
Good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Just comment, just very pleased too with the reading and all the hard work in the spring and summer to get these kids to passing. And the eight that didn't reach really, to me, is a pretty low number. You're going to have, no matter what school or district you're in, you're going to have kids who are not going to really achieve as you would hope. But to bring those to a passing and get them to, whether through maps, testing, or Iowa, to get them to the passing, that's, I think that's, says a lot about our, our teachers, our administrators, and our staff. And I'm just, that's one of the things that definitely stick out in my mind that I'm just very pleased to have.
At the next meeting, we'll talk about our summer programming, just there were too many things on the agenda for this evening. But we, I have the numbers of students who participated in the summer programming and we're just very thankful for your support that we are able to provide that for our students.
Well, I just want to add, I don't have any questions, but some of these indicators, while, you know, on the surface, you may think that there are achievement issues. And that isn't necessarily the case. When you look at the formulas of how they come up with these thresholds, participation is also something that's taken into consideration as well. One of the other points that I want to make, and I've always said this in the past, and the superintendent alluded to this earlier in her remarks, is that this is literally a snapshot in time. This is a day in time. And I don't want to place too much credence into what these indicators met or not met, you know, what they really mean with respect to what our kids are learning and what's truly going on in the classroom. I still firmly believe, and I doubt that there are many educators that would disagree with me, especially teachers, that ongoing instruction, formative assessment, those regular checks throughout the school day and during the weeks when teachers have their meetings and they compare data, that's really what drives instruction. That's really what teachers learn what kids don't know so that they can adapt their instruction so that they can teach kids what they need to know. And unfortunately, these high stakes tests, and they are high stakes tests, in some ways place an unfair burden on school districts because really doesn't tell the true story, the full story. And, and that's not the takeaway from the data that we do get from report cards. But the bottom line is achievement data is supposed to be used to help drive instruction, right? So, but if this is only offered one time a year, where is the opportunity to learn from this so that you can change your behavior so that you can teach the kids? You can't. So I just want to make sure that the public is clear that this is a snapshot in time. Our profile that we do every year, this is the reason why we do the profile. Because it, it does tell a much better picture that is truly indicative of what's going on every day in our schools. So I think that we've always known where our weaknesses are from an instructional standpoint. We've always known our student body. We've always known our student body and our cohorts, the ones that struggle and why they struggle. So, I would venture to say that over probably the last four or five years, those cohorts over an extended period of time from a longitudinal standpoint have improved. What tends to happen is that when you change the benchmark, it's almost akin to changing the goalpost, pushing the goalpost out farther, even though like if it was there the year prior, you make the field goal. But when you push it out ten yards, you miss it. And all of a sudden, it gives an impression that you didn't make improvement and you really did. So, I want to make sure that, for one, I give the district credit where credit is due and also place even more emphasis in the amount of work that goes behind looking at the data prior to when it is published. So, I know that districts have an opportunity to review achievement data and submit changes to the Ohio Department of Education. I know you guys work feverishly in doing that and turning it over and turning it over and turn it over to make sure that when it is published, it's as accurate as it can possibly be, knowing that it's still not a true indicator of what's going on in the classroom. So, I'm less concerned with what more that we can do in furnishing our staff with the tools necessary to do what they need to do. I think that we've done a pretty good job of that. But continuing, you know, to work on the areas where you know you need to work on and not allow this one snapshot in time to be the driving force behind that. The driving force behind that is the data that you collect on a regular basis in all of the classrooms and the interventions that occur every day. That's the data that you use to drive instruction. And at the end of the day, ideally, when this thing is published, you know, if the formulas weren't so convoluted, you would anticipate, you would know what they are. But because, you know, the formulas changed, the benchmarks changed from year to year, it's really difficult to anticipate where you know you are because you really don't know when you push that button and send it off to O.D.E. You're still guessing. I think you minimize the extent to which you're guessing, but there's still a small element that you really don't know what it's going to be. And that's kind of scary. So, I just want to make sure that our public understands and knows that there's a whole lot of good stuff going on in the classroom and in the districts. And, you know, some of this information isn't as critical as it seems.
Right, no, and I would agree with you, Mr. Curtis. There are so many tremendous things going on in our school district. My children come home every day. My son is in his senior year and he's enjoying it tremendously. So, I absolutely agree, there are things. I guess, you know, my statement, I hope it wasn't misinterpreted. I'm just saying, if there are additional things that we as a board can do at any point, you know, we are here and we are supportive of that. So, please don't misunderstand. You know, I just want to know that if there are things that we can do, we absolutely will. So, thank you for all you do.
And then they say it'll change again, teachers have to adapt again.
Right. And, yeah, and I guess, yeah, my other statement is any time that you are evaluated on something and you're not aware of what the, you know, the requirements are or what the, you know, the actual rubric is, it makes it difficult. So, I can completely understand that and appreciate that. No one should be, you know, examined on things that they're not aware of, so.
I do like the football moving the goalpost analogy.
Absolutely.
Very good. Very true. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is remonstrance. I do not have any blue cards. Okay, so, we will move on to our business. Item H, Treasurer's Report. Without further, without any objection from my colleagues, I will read H one through three together. H one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of August sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of July twenty seventeen, bank reconciliation, general fund, financial summary report and financial report by fund as sent to the board under separate cover. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of July twenty seventeen. The total, including payroll, is three million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Do I have a motion to approve H one through three?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion or any comments, Mr. Aho?
These are the typical items, bring them to you every month.
Okay. Okay, well, that being said, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes four zero. Next on the agenda is item I, action items. I one through three, without objection from my colleagues, I will read them all together.
Can you pull one, please, or separate one?
Okay, so, I will separate out I one per the request of Mrs. Davis. Mr. Aho, do I need to make a motion to do that or can I just do it? Okay, all right. So, we'll just go with I one. I one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts certified licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O.R.C. background check. Do I have a motion to approve I one?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Same.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Okay, and that item passes three and one abstention. Okay, moving on to action items one, items two and three. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read them together. I two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O.R.C. background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O.R.C. background checks. Do I have a motion to accept I two and three?
Seven.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Item passes four zero. Moving on to action items, new business, J one through eight. J one through eight. Okay, so without objection from my colleagues, I will read action items J one through eight together. J one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of backpacks and school supplies valued at two hundred dollars from the H.C. Companies, twenty-four fifty Edison Boulevard, Suite Three, Twinsburg, Ohio, four four oh eight seven, to be donated to students at Wilcox Primary School per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a donation in the amount of three dollars and twenty cents from the Cula Foundation, six six zero zero, Peach Three, Dunwoodie Road, six hundred Embassy Row, Suite Two five five, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three two eight, for Samuel L. Vissel School, per the attached exhibit. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a donation of school supplies valued at one hundred and twenty dollars from Techno Form, one seven five five Enterprise Parkway, Twinsburg, Ohio, four four oh eight seven, for students in the district, per the attached exhibit. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following administrators as credentialed evaluators for the purpose of the Ohio Principal Evaluation System, O.P.E.S., and the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, O.T.A.S. Staff members are listed below. Five, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of Media Center items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. Six, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below list of items to be deleted from inventory. And they are mentioned. Seven, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the second reading of the following new and revised Board of Education policies. They are all listed there for your perusal. Eight, whereas the city of Twinsburg by ordinance number nine four dash one nine 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 adopted May twenty-eighth, one nine 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 designated an area within the city as a community reinvestment area. And whereas, effective July twentieth, nineteen ninety-nine, the Director of the Ohio Department of Development determined the area designated by the city within ordinance number nine four dash one nine nine contains the characteristics set forth in section thirty-seven thirty-five point six six of the Ohio Revised Code and certified the area as a community reinvestment area. And whereas, the community reinvestment area is a tool which has been provided to the counties, townships, and municipalities to promote economic development, promote urban renewal and revitalization activities, and encourage the retention and creation of jobs. And whereas, in an effort to work cooperatively to facilitate economic development and to lessen the impact the real estate exemptions have on the city of Twinsburg, on the Twinsburg City School District, the city and the school district have established a revenue-sharing agreement pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section fifty-seven oh nine point eight eight two, that is intended to specify, that is intended to specify the manner and procedure for the sharing of municipal income tax revenues generated by any and all existing CRA and/or EZ agreements and certain future CRA and/or EZ agreements. And whereas, the revenue-sharing agreement is attached heretofore as Exhibit J eight. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District, County of Summit, State of Ohio, that Section one, the revenue-sharing agreement that is attached heretofore as Exhibit A between the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education and the city of Twinsburg is hereby approved. Section two, that the President, Treasurer, and Superintendent are each authorized and directed to execute and deliver the revenue-sharing agreement substantially in the form on file with this Board pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section fifty-seven oh nine point eight, and are each authorized and directed to execute and deliver any other agreements and to make all other actions and do all other things necessary and consistent with this resolution in order to accomplish the purposes of this resolution. Section three, that the Treasurer is authorized and directed to promptly certify a copy of this resolution to the city. Section four, this Board hereby finds and determines that all formal actions of this Board and any of its committees concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this Board or its committees and that all deliberation of this Board and any of its committees that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with law. Section five, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and immediately upon its adoption. Do I have a motion to accept items J one through eight?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. I would first and foremost like to thank the H.C. Companies as well as the Cula Foundation and also the donations from the Techno Form for the nominations which they have donated for our schools and more importantly, to assist our students and staff in delivering the education that we hope to for all of our, for all of our students and staff here at the Twinsburg City Schools. Mrs. Davis, I know that we did the first reading of the policy. I'm not sure if you want to make any more comments, given the fact that you guys went in pretty much, you know, extensive explanation in terms of what it all means, other than the fact that this is the second reading and is part of the normal process of doing business.
I think we did go into pretty good detail and it eventually will be on the website. If I, if Rob and I think any further explanation needs to be done at the third reading, then we'll do it at that time.
Okay. Any other comments? I know that you did a lot of work with the administration, Mr. Solura, with respect to the revenue-sharing agreement, so you might want to expand on that.
No, I think it, Mrs. Powers mentioned it in her Superintendent's report. It has been something that has been, how long has it been since now? I know Finance Committee has seen it for a significant amount of time, a lot of meetings. Again, I want to thank Mr. Larry Finch, Mr. Maestros, Mayor Yates, as well as Superintendent Powers, Mr. Aho, Mr. Welker, and Rob, who's not here tonight. I think it's a very fair agreement. It is, is nice to have, you know, something that is consistent, that benefits the district, as well as still allowing the city to go out and, you know, actively solicit business to come here, you know? And I think, you know, a lot of times, there tends to be a tension in a lot of, a lot of different cities and school boards when it comes to, you know, getting business in and offering these abatements and how schools are going to be reimbursed for the tax abatements. And so, I just, you know, this is a very fair, fair, fair agreement for everybody. It benefits the city, it benefits the district. It is not putting the district in any additional financial gain that we would not be entitled to. So, we're not taking any additional dollars away from the city. It still allows the city to, you know, go out and actively solicit these businesses, which they've done a fantastic job at over the past few years. And I think it, it lessens the confusion and kind of streamlines the process to make, make this, any additional CRAs, any additional payment programs a lot easier to maintain and monitor and ensure that everybody's treated fairly. So, you know, again, thank you to the administration for their hard work on it, to the city as well for their efforts in it. And just kind of, you know, glad that it's finally come to fruition. I look forward to, you know, the city adopting it at one of their upcoming meetings, so.
Well, I concur. I know that there's a lot of work that's gone on over a long period of time. And so, the fact that we're here now is good news, so I appreciate that. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to thank, I know that both Committees, Finance and Policy, you guys have done a tremendous amount of work for both of these. So, thank you for digging in deep and taking the time away from your families, because I don't think everybody always realizes, you know, we do in addition to this, these meetings, there are committee meetings that, you know, we're spending the time and really digging in deep to make sure that everything is as it should be. So, thanks.
Just, I know there's been a lot of activities with just these first couple of weeks of school. Using my voice, but last week, the Back to School Vice Centennial, that was incredible. I mean, I thought it was a good attendance and the kids were pumped, the families were pumped to be there. And I think it was a good, just a great event for the community and the kids and great job to administrators, teachers. A lot of teachers were there outside of school when they had a busy, busy start to their first few weeks of school. And it was a great, it was a good, well-planned, I thought. And I wasn't able to attend the academy kickoff. I wish I would have been. I had another parent meeting at Dodge, but I don't know if any of you were there, but it was something I really wanted to go to. And I, there's just been a lot of good things to the start of the year. And it seems like, I mean, it's just, even my kids have been excited about the first of the year and usually they're dragging in and having a hard time getting going. But it's just been a good vibe this school year and I just, I anticipate it continuing.
Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Okay. And that item passes 4-0. Okay. And next is approval, excuse me, J9 of approval of new and revised Board of Education policies. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the new and revised Board of Education policies noted in J7 above. Do I have a motion to approve J9?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Terrell Waldron. Discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that passes 4-0. Now, on to miscellaneous. Do we have any items from miscellaneous?
I should have saved it for that time. I concur with Mrs. Davis. We, you know, I attended the School Bicentennial event too. My children enjoyed it. Thanks to PTO for having some really nice ICs for the kids. I know they enjoyed that. And there was just good representation from a lot of, the athletes were all there, they were doing all of the activities for the kids. It was just a very nice event, so thank you to the administration for putting that together. Anytime you do a project like that, it's a lot of work, so thank you for doing that. I also wanted to make mention, I know Mrs. Powers mentioned that we're going to, the school district's going to be doing the event on Friday for the Texas, but also the Twinsburg Rotary in conjunction with the Market Square event is going to be collecting any donations. So, anybody that's interested, I don't know if it'll air before then, but if you're interested in bringing up anything to the square on Saturday to the market event, we will be collecting items for the Twinsburg Rotary. And that's all I have.
I actually was able to go to the Academy kickoff and much like, you know, when I see Mr. Bindis present today, you know, on cafeteria food, and don't take offense, but you know, that's, you know, and you see his passion and the things that he's done to kind of think outside the box and deliver the presentation that Mr. Potter put on and the amount of business partnerships that he has gained, you know, and his team has gained, you know, this past year in putting this together and the opportunities that our kids are now able to get at no cost within our walls, setting themselves up for whatever they really want to do in the future is amazing. I'm looking forward to the program. I don't know of anything this expansive and big in any other districts locally, let alone anywhere else in Ohio as far as I'm aware of, you know, to the extent of what he has. It was great to see, there was well over 100 people in attendance there on top of the business partners, a great keynote speaker that I think really hit home, and I anticipate this becoming fairly large as soon as we get this first round of kids through. I know the kids that have already partaken in some of the things that were offered at HUJO over the summer had a blast. We've also had opportunities for kids to go to some, you know, tool and die CNC machining classes and workshops, just a ton of different opportunities out there available for our kids, sports management and things like that with a few of our new partners. So again, you know, fantastic job by the administration, you know, for allowing Norm the way to kind of grow this and build it. Looking forward to it. It was a great night and I imagine a packed house at next year's once the word gets out. So, thank you.
In the same here, I wasn't able to get to the Academy kickoff, but I was able to talk to Norm at the bicentennial celebration. So, the bicentennial celebration was incredible. I think that it exceeded expectation. I'm not exactly sure what I expected, but when I was there, it was much more than what I expected. A lot of fun, just kids having fun, staff there having fun, kids running around doing tug-of-war and, you know, playing, I guess volleyball. Wasn't really using the volleyball, but they were playing volleyball, you know, getting ice cones and, you know, it's just completely laid back in a nice atmosphere. So, I don't know that we've ever done that before, but I heard a lot of comments that this is something that should be a regular occurrence. Wink, wink. So, but, you know, a lot of good feedback. Also, I had an opportunity to go to the football game last week and first home game to check out the scoreboard. Wow. Just incredible, great game. We didn't win, but it was exciting. It was a nail-biter and I'm all good with that, like, you know, if we're going back and forth, then obviously I want to win, but I was really, really pleased with the effort that our boys put forward, and I'm really looking forward to the rest of the year as well as all the other fall sports that are going on right now. I think that we're getting kicked off to a good year and I'm really excited with what our kids are doing. So, you know, that's it for me for miscellaneous.
And I, I'm sorry, I did miss one thing. I did want to offer condolences to the family of Mr. Dan Emmett. He was a physical education teacher for the Twinsburg City School District for many, many years, and he was my teacher. He was in the school district for well over 20 years, and he did pass away about a week and a half ago, so I know that many are aware, but in case any of their, are there any others that didn't hear it, we do offer the condolences for, as I said, Mr. Dan Emmett, former physical education teacher.
So, item L is executive session, and we do have a need for executive session, so the Board of Education will enter into executive session at 8:38 PM to consider the discipline of a public employee per Board of Education Policy Number 0160A. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. We will go into executive session and we will not reconvene publicly. Thank you.